Call the order of the planning and zoning meeting for February 19th. I'd like to welcome the public here and also all the members. Good turnout tonight. We have one excused absence, Mr. Darlene Gardner. What's the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion to approve.
I have a motion by Mike Walden, second by Peg. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approval of the agenda is the next item. Pleasure of the board?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. First item of new business, Ludi Ange Moore Family Partnership rezoning. Stephen?
Good evening, Planning and Zoning Board members. So we have two items on the agenda tonight. The first is going to be the rezoning. Sorry, we have some new program up here. I'm trying to figure out on the fly as well. Okay, so tonight we're going to look at the Ludi Ange Moore Family Partnership rezoning application that the town has received. It's located at 161 Vernon White Road. This is just northeast of the Vernon White, Mill Street, and Highway 11 intersection. It's a 1.57 acre site, currently zoned agricultural residential. The proposal is for general business. Place notifications on the site on February 7th and mail the adjacent property owner notices of this meeting tonight on the same date. You may be familiar with this area. We actually had a rezoning a couple of months ago for this area as well. You remember it was the parcels encompassed in kind of where my pointer is showing this area right here. It was a 12, a little over 12 acre site. Today we have received a rezoning for just one parcel right here. Hooked between Beacon Drive and Vernon White. The rezoning map. Okay, if we're looking at the existing land use, again, the site is a little blurry up there, but the site is represented by a red star right here. It is currently a single-family residential property. As you see, mostly around it is commercial property. There is a small sliver in the southeast of the property that touches a single-family residential property. Of course, keep in mind depending on the, it would be a, likely an area that would have to be buffered with a commercial use imposed at this site against the single-family residential. Current zoning, everything in red around it is general business. The tan color that you see is agricultural residential. This site is currently agricultural residential, mostly general business around a small sliver of office and institutional to the east. Again, a very small sliver of agricultural residential in the southeast of this property as well. Future land use plan suggests urban, sorry, neighborhood, sorry, regional center for this site. The regional center is all of the red that you see. To the south, neighborhood center, which is a slightly less intense commercial character area. And then to the southeast, the tan that you see is urban neighborhood. Regional center, which this property is characterized as, is for high to medium intensity commercial, retail, or lodging uses that act as a regional activity center with offices. And it's primarily auto-oriented sites and destinations with national or regional business. To dive a little deeper into that, again, these are auto-oriented commercial areas that serve the regional market with high-intensity shopping centers. With good design, they can provide a pleasant outdoor and indoor shopping experience and complement the community as a whole for their shopping needs. Potential zones within the regional center is general business. Now, possibly office and institutional, intermediate, commercial, commercial neighborhood, or multifamily residential may be appropriate in certain sizes. Again, the uses are greatly for big box, retail, commercial chain, restaurants, and other uses that you typically see along a highly-traveled highway type site such as this. Hotels and multifamily again are appropriate in some areas. We'll look at some of the land use goals of the comprehensive plan. We're looking to strengthen and diversify the economy, to utilize the future land use plan and its map when making these rezoning decisions, to encourage non-residential growth in the form of retail, restaurants, and offices, and even industrial development in areas that are recommended on the future land use plan. Some economic development goals to continue to strengthen and diversify the economy, to emphasize on retail, office, industrial areas, uses along Winterville Parkway and other appropriate areas, to help transform Winterville from the bedroom community into a neighboring community of green hills or self-sufficiency, discourage residential zonings that have visibility areas with good access. The focus on business recruitment, expansion, and retention, to help encourage local businesses in their expansion efforts. We did receive one telephone call. This was on the exact same day that I placed out the sign. The property owner was an adjacent property owner that did have some concerns about the noise, how the development could affect their property, as well as how the development could affect traffic in the area. They did state that they were neither for nor against the rezoning, but these were some of the concerns that they had while we were on the telephone. Just to give a little overview of the rezoning process, tonight we're gonna view it from our planning and zoning board. You're gonna make a recommendation to council. We're gonna invite public up here as well for public comments to, so they can provide their voice. Town council will eventually, likely at their next meeting, schedule a public hearing for this rezoning and ultimately have a public hearing on this rezoning. Staff's recommendation is the general business rezoning request is consistent with the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance, the future land use plan and comprehensive plan, and is compatible with the existing development and trends in the surrounding area. Therefore, staff does recommend approval of the rezoning request for the 1.57 acres from agricultural residential to general business as it is consistent with comprehensive land use. Does anybody have any questions before we begin to public comments? Okay, and we can start the, the public comments session for or against at, at your guidance.
Thank you, Stephen. Okay, we'll open up this meeting to public comments. Is there anyone who'd like to speak against this rezoning? If so, would you step to the podium there and state your name and address? Anyone like to speak against? Hearing none. Is there anyone that likes to speak for this rezoning?
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Scott Anderson. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant and the property owner. Appreciate the opportunity to present this request to you. And thanks, Stephen. I think you did a great job with presenting the background and the summary for you, so I won't elaborate a lot, but I do just want to say, again, this request is really just filling me in what we call the doughnut hole kind of in the center. We're surrounded on three sides by the general business. The property is access. It does have an, doesn't directly touch any public street right-ofways, so the access to this property is through the property that was recently rezoned to general business. And the intent of the property owner is to sell it to the same owner as the adjacent property and the property that he resigned today. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for this gentleman? Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak for this? Hearing none, I'll close the public comment session.
And we have, I'm starting to put in the process of rezoning language that the board may use if they wish. Just to kind of give a little bit of an example, on the board, and I don't know if that's clearly, if you can read that clearly, but essentially it says, "Ludi Ange Moore Family Partnership rezoning of parcel number 54421 from agricultural residential to general business." If you are approving the rezoning, you could state something to the effect of, "It is consistent with the Winterville Comprehensive Plan, is reasonable, and is in the public's interest, therefore you're approving or recommending approval of the rezoning." Or if you are recommending denial of the rezoning, some language that you could use is, "After consideration of the comprehensive land use plan and other factors, this proposal is found to be unreasonable." And then you can explain the reasons that you recommend denial to council. Again, this is kind of a, a recommendation nowadays of how to, to make a motion for a rezoning.
Thank you, Stephen. You have a motion? Is there a second to that motion? Second by Peg Clyburn. Okay, is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Hearing no nays, the motion is carried. The recommendation of this board to the town council is that this parcel, being consistent with the comprehensive plan, is recommended approval for rezoning. Thank you. Next item of new business, Southport Phase One Preliminary Plat.
Right, thank you, and great, great motion, Mr. Jones. That was perfect. Okay, so this second one that we have tonight is Southport Phase One, and I'm gonna give everybody a little bit of history on this one. I particularly, particularly, am pretty excited about this project. I was actually talking right before this meeting, about 10 years ago, right when I started this job. I think it was the first month or so, we had this group come into town to talk about the property that we're about to discuss. And it was a group that had done extensive HUDs throughout North Carolina, but especially in the Triangle area. And I was really excited to, to see a property of this size and type be master-planned by a single developer. At the time, there were so many question marks about the property, and the market was kind of right there, but the developer just wasn't, wasn't sure if it was the right time, so they walked away from the project. I was worried after that, because I was so excited about seeing an entire project be made of the entire parcel or property, that I was really worried from then on, up until this project came available, that someone was gonna purchase 20 acres that touched the road, or 30 acres that touched the road, and they would develop that, and then it would never really go beyond that into the kind of heart of this land because of the unknowns of the property, until this development came, came to light. So that's kind of my preface on it and the history of why I am so excited about this project and this type of development. The applicant is Scott Moore of Brian Properties, is actually with us tonight. This is a 24.5, 245.43 acre site. It's, it does touch Church Street Extension and Lorri Ellis Road. It's south of Mellon Downs, Lorri Meadows, and Holly Grove, as we'll see right here in a few minutes. What we're gonna look at tonight is actually not a preliminary plat for the entire site. It's actually two tracks of the preliminary plat. They are currently designing the interior piece of this property and are focusing on this just to get started. So we're gonna be looking at Track A and Track B. Track A is a 23.6 9 acre site, while Track B is a 26.69 acre site. In total, it's about 50 acres for this preliminary plat. One, another, you know, very unique thing about this was, this was rezoned as a conditional district, and even more unique than that, a PUD. So in this case, it was an R6 and multifamily conditional district or PUD with its own ordinance. So that essentially means it has some criteria that is unique to its own development, and what isn't covered and approved in the PUD or the rezoning document then falls onto the ordinances of the town. What we're gonna look at tonight is gonna show 123 single-family detached lots, 56 single-family attached lots, typically referred to as townhomes commonly. So it's gonna have 179 residential units in this first phase. Though it is showing a R6 zoning district for the detached, the average detached lot size that we're gonna look at tonight is actually 8,689 square foot. Single-family attached lots will feature 2,200 square foot. There's also within this PUD gonna be open space or recreation space as well. Tonight, we'll see in Track A, there's gonna be .29 acres of recreation space. Track B will show 1.94 acres of recreation space. Of course, the land that we look at tonight will potentially be used for recreation dedication if it meets the subdivision ordinance standard at the final plat. We'll, we'll really be covering that more at the final plat stage, but just kind of wanted to point out that there are some proposed recreational spaces within the preliminary plat. Again, this was proposed as a PUD, Planned Unit Development. Generally, you use a planned unit development on land that has potential issues. In this case, there were some environmentally sensitive land on this site, as well as the Piedmont natural gas easement on this site as well. So it, it required a, a unique design to make this site really function as a, a good neighborhood and design as we're gonna see it. With this site, it required a ton of upfront research on the land, determining environmental features, what could be used, what couldn't be used. So we've actually been working with the applicant for quite a while now in this process. The applicant also voluntarily, prior to the rezoning and the PUD's presentation to you and council, created public meetings and invited the community to come look at what they were proposing, to help give them ideas of things that they wanted to see in the community, of concerns that they saw in the proposal. And all of this was done voluntarily prior to the planning and zoning of town council. Again, numerous meetings were also held internally with various departments on the PUD document and the rezoning proposal at the time. The PUD document and rezoning received final approval from town council of January 2023, oh, a little over a year ago. It's a conditional district, again, with its own guidelines and requirements for this development. Any aspect of the development that's not addressed within the PUD ordinance is subject to Winterville standards, procedures, ordinances, and regulations. This is an image of the rezoning and PUD plan. This is kind of a overview of, of, of the development in general. As you can see, the green is all open space, therefore environmental concerns, or to help create a subdivision that, that has clusters of development and character types. The lighter tan color is a single-family attached. And on the screen, it's so hard to get the colors to project correctly, but on this area, which is the, the westernmost portion up against Church Street, has a small area of single-family attached that has access, if you take, once you turn into the development, you would take a right to get to the single-family attached development. If you stayed straight, you probably would not even notice single-family attached. Yes, sir. So I don't think it's actually called out. Yes, this was just the kind of overall view and scheme. Once we get to the actual PUD, I'll, I'll be able to show you where they're proposing Just an example of, of something within the PUD is showing the R6. It's a 6,000 square foot lot with its own particular lot width, front yard, side yard, rear yard setbacks, and the same is true with a multifamily slash townhome that are proposed within this development as well. It would be different than what you would see within our zoning ordinance, but that kind of, you know, gives an example of, of how a PUD is different. Another, another thing that's kind of unique to this PUD is that the typical cross of the residential street that they're gonna have within this subdivision, tree-lined streets, an offset sidewalk, well, it's gonna be something a little bit more unique than I think what we've seen thus far with any building. This is an aerial of the entire property. Outlined in the pinkish-purple color are the five parcels that make up this entire property. On this one, I have, I have overlaying a preliminary plat, but again, it's kind of hard to see. You may wanna flip to your pages on handout, but the, the two tracks that we're gonna look at tonight for the preliminary plat are closest to Church Street Extension, as you can see. This encompasses some single-family attached and single-family detached. Of course, this will continue with the next preliminary plat that you'll likely see before too long. Again, there is a design phase of that right now. And then the northern part up against Lorri Ellis Road, which would all be single-family attached, and how that comes off of Lorri Ellis Road and even feeds into Lorri Ellis This is an image of the plat just by itself. This is zoomed in to the area that is called Track A, but it's closer to Church Street Extension. Again, this is gonna be 57 single-family detached lots along this northern street, and then, single-family attached on Street B. So with, with this one, the recreation area that is being proposed is actually a small linear, what, what you generally kind of call a pocket park in this area, just south of the single-family attached and single-family attached. Are you following in the tracks of the, of the location? That's correct.
I don't know, gas easement?
That is correct. Yeah, I'm sure. I mean, yeah, yeah, so it's, yeah, it's a good, good use of land that would have to remain open anyway. And then the second track that we're looking at, called Track B, is up here, near Lorri Ellis Road. It's gonna be across the street from Brookstone, Brookfield, Brookfield or Brookstone, I always go those two names up. And it'll feed directly into Mellon Downs. This will be a 65 lot, single-family attached addition. On this one, there is a roughly two acres right here that will remain open in the northern area, kind of adjacent to Lorri Ellis Road. There's also a small pocket park proposed within this area as well of this preliminary plat. Of course, as the preliminary plat in the middle binds these two tracks, we'll likely see more open spaces. Some, some highlights of this subdivision, of course, it's a PUD, so it's gonna have some pocket parks, some walking trails, some open space. Couple aspects of the PUD that you would, you would find within the document is, all single-family detached, and this is a condition that the developer placed on themselves. All single-family detached units will be 1,800 square foot heated space as a minimum, have two-car garages with decorative window, or- have two-car garages with decorative window, or decorative or window garage doors, architectural shingles, and a variety of home elevations throughout the subdivision, as well as a six-inch minimum roof overhang on all sides. Similarly, a single-family attached will have the six-inch minimum roof overhang on all sides, architectural shingles, and a minimum of 1,600-square-foot heated spaces.
I have a question, Stephen, regarding the family attached.
Yes.
I looked at this, and it looks to me like there's no parking at each site. It has to be a common parking lot?
That is a great question. So, within our subdivision ordinance, what will make this single-family attached is the ability to park at least two vehicles on your own lot. So you have to, for it to be, quote, "single-family," it has to have parking on its own lot. So if we go back to the typical townhouse kind of layout right here, you'll see that on each lot, they are proposing the ability to place at least two cars on each individual lot.
Okay.
Now, during the technical review committee review of this, one of our staff members said, you know what? It would kind of be nice if there was a parking lot for overflow parking in case two cars aren't enough, or somebody has a birthday party, or whatever it may be. The applicant voluntarily redesigned this area to add this parking lot. It is not a requirement of the subdivision ordinance. It was something that they, I believe, even removed a building to place that there.
How does the jurisdiction of that parking lot work? In the homeowners association?
100% be managed by the homeowners association. No, it'll serve multiple uses as well. Like, for instance, nowadays, you've got to have mail kiosks for new subdivision development, so it'll actually house the mail kiosk and things like that as well. But no, the town will not be involved with maintenance or anything to do with the actual parking lot. Probably.
Sir? Do you have separate requirements for the required trees, street trees, for this type of development, or is that only for commercial development?
Do we have, like, types of trees?
Yeah.
So we haven't actually gotten that far yet. In the PUD document, it essentially says, when we get to that point, we will meet with the town to determine which street trees are appropriate for the design, the infrastructure, things like that. Obviously, probably, as you know, trees can be a very beautiful aspect of a neighborhood. It can also be a concern from a maintenance standpoint from the town. This subdivision will actually also be taking over maintenance of the trees as well through the HOA. So the town will not be responsible for a.
I just wanted to call out that the typical section shows like you're going to have large trees, but on the single-family attached, that space that's between those houses, that you would not be able to have a large tree planted in that small of a space for very long, so.
Yeah, that's a good point. You're saying between kind of the single-family attached and the road on Street B kind of...
Yeah, like on the sheet that you have both tracks, that spot that's between there, that's really tiny.
Yeah, that's a great point. There are going to be areas that the trees probably will have to be staggered differently or maybe a different type of tree in certain areas. But that was for our electric department especially. One of the major concerns was, what kind of trees are we talking about that's going to, you know, the roots are going to be, you know, pulling into things, or the limbs are going to potentially be over, you know, the street during a hurricane, or whatever it may be. But that is something that we're going to be coordinating with the developer once we get to that.
Definitely don't want willow. You don't want willow, they will invade the underground pipe.
Yeah, they're beautiful, but, yeah, I think, yeah, I think that's, there's definitely a list of trees that our electric department has set. None of those, but we'll entertain. And I do think that it's a little outside, or very much outside of my expertise and knowledge, but I believe that either NC DOT or the state to some extent has a list of street trees that are recommended to be planted in this type of scenario. So I'm sure that's something that we're going to be working with the developer at And this slide, this next slide, is just kind of discussing a little bit about the street state with tree-lined streets, seven-foot advantage. Just to kind of give a little bit of information on the timeline of this project, if you and council do approve this, next construction drawings would be submitted and reviewed by our technical review committee, everybody in-house, to determine all of this is, you know, the trees and various aspects of it are done to our requirements, as well as done as the PUD requires. Once the construction drawings have finally been approved by town staff, then they would be able to begin the construction of the development themselves. Once that is complete, of course, you will then see it again in the final platform. With that said, staff does recommend approval of Southbrook Phase 1 preliminary plat, as it has gone through and been approved by the Winterville Technical Review Committee, and it meets all standards for this project. Does anybody have any questions?
Yes. You know, I missed a question all the time.
Absolutely.
In the technical review committee, do you have the input as to the architectural design of the townhomes?
We do not. So architectural is not an aspect of it. We are viewing the construction of the actual subdivision itself, so we're looking at...
At some point, that's going to be reviewed, I would think, correct?
Not really by the town, so the town doesn't have much of a say on what the actual units themselves would look like. Another question?
Maybe I'm phrasing it wrong, Stephen. The way they would look, to me, is an architectural design for the townhomes. And it would seem to me that we have an architectural part of our subdivision law or other ordinances that speaks to this. I mean, I don't want these looking like army barracks, and I know Mr. Moore has been very accommodating, and I'm not saying they would, but I really am hoping that they'll look very nice to me, not like an army barracks, all the same, great clapboards, you know, this, we want this to be a really nice subdivision. And I'm hoping that at some point, is there some review of the architectural, what it's going to look like, the building?
Not really. So staff doesn't have that in-depth of a review of architectural requirements in any way. We do have very limited architectural requirements for commercial buildings, such as it cannot be unfinished concrete brick, so like a cinder block-created commercial building, or a metal facade commercial building. They do have some voluntarily, some voluntary architectural designs in there, such as the roof overhang and no duplicate houses across the street, things like that. But no, our zoning ordinance or subdivision ordinance does not, other than, we do have some for multifamily, but no, for single-family attached, we do not.
Single-family attached, okay.
Or single-family detached.
Okay, because what came to mind is when we reviewed that application down here by the, excuse me, the church with the red roof, we had an apartment building going next to it, and that, they submitted architectural drawings, but that was multifamily.
We do have, just like you said, we do have a fairly strict architectural manual for multifamily for single-family attached and single-family detached areas.
Okay.
Stephen, in this PUD development, who determines the setbacks and the lot size? I mean, because from what I'm reading, it basically has stated in here that the owner or the developer, he designs this, but there's no, are there any guidelines? I mean, like, when you go to an R6, there's a guideline. Is there a guideline for the PUD?
Yeah, it'll be the same thing. Anything that the PUD doesn't state will be the same as any other development. So, for instance, with this, there will be actual lots that are final-platted at the, by the end of this process, and it'll create those lots and have actual property lines. Is that the question?
So I guess what I'm gathering is that the whole subdivision as a whole is considered a PUD, but with inside that PUD, there are going to be certain zoning, depending on what it is?
Yeah, that's kind of a good way to say it. So there are essentially, you know, back to this image right here, this entire land is the PUD. Within this land, all of it is R6 zone, except for a very small piece that is in this area that was designated as multifamily subdivision. So it's, the only thing that's really different from this proposal and a regular rezoning is if they would have just selected this as a multifamily product, and then the rest of it rezoned at R6. But other than that and the specific kind of criteria or conditions that were placed within the PUD document itself, all intents and purposes, it's just a regular subdivision.
To kind of follow up on what Doug was saying, so we don't have anything that says that to go in a certain area, that we've got to have a certain percentage of masonry veneer or vinyl siding. We don't have anything in our...
That's correct.
Okay, that's disappointing.
As a staff person, I haven't seen a lot of concern about it. You know, we have received some rezonings where people have stated it's going to be hardy plank, it's going to be this, 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 and this at the rezoning phase. I would have to really dive into state statute to see what a city could require on residential properties, but that's something that could certainly be done. Yeah, I will say, staff, anytime a developer comes, we do fleet, that is going to be a good development, too, that they bring good developers, that they bring good builders. But yes, I don't know to what extent we would actually legally be able to state materials of residential structure.
Perhaps Mr. Moore could speak to that?
Yeah. No, there is something in the, the state requires either/or. So either recreation land that is dedicated, so the theory behind it is, when there's an existing city, there's an existing recreation department. If you bring, in this case, 600 homes to the area, then that is going to put a strain on the recreation department, because you're bringing so many more people to the city. So the state does have something that says, either you provide open space and recreation space, or you pay what they call a fee in lieu of, which is a certain, is calculated based on the number of units and the square footage for that the developer pays there. The state requires it, yes, sir. No, because the state already has requirements on recreation calculations, I guess is the best way to say it. So the state tells us what we can and cannot do as far as recreation for a new subdivision or new amount of units coming in. Does that make sense? No, they have to either dedicate land that meets the criteria within the subdivision ordinance, or pay the fee in lieu of. So they have the choice to do one or the other, but we cannot make them choose one or the other, unless the land that they are proposing does not meet the requirements of the subdivision ordinance. And let me give you a good example of that. So if subdivision A comes over and they say, we're going to build a 100-lot subdivision, and we've got five acres of wetlands we're going to make a park out of, the subdivision ordinance does not allow that because it's not usable land for actual, for recreation I can send you the requirements, yeah. It's 1,200 square foot of, if I'm correct, I think, but it's 1,200 square foot per of recreation space. So... So, if you build a house, you have to provide twelve hundred square foot for that house on that site, or pay the fee in lieu of. The fee in lieu of is looking at the tax, um, value of that land. So, let's say, they say, "We don't have any extra land, we're gonna just pay the fee." They have to pay, let's say it's, uh, twenty thousand dollars an acre is what the tax value says. They have to pay that version of however much land that twelve hundred square foot of homes would be allowed for, if that makes sense.
Push, push your speaker so we can hear.
We were, you were saying the recreation part of that, this phase is right on the edge, and it's, I think you said, maybe a third of an acre?
I think that's correct.
I think that's what it was. Does, does it ha, when, when, when you say recreation area, does that, does it require what it will be? As a recreation, could that be like a, a basketball goal and that's it?
It could be a field, and that's it.
And that's it.
It could be open space, and that's it. It could be a pool, it could be, um, of course, it has to meet, again, the criteria of the subdivision ordinance. So, um, some of that is usability of the land, is the shape of the land and location of the land in a area that could actually be usable by the community, or by the people within the community.
Okay, and one more question on that, then. Can we, as a town, we, can we require what goes there? If, if it's possible to go there, can we require it?
So, could we ask, could we require them to put a pool in there?
Yeah.
You're saying no.
So, they're just, well, I have a problem with them saying it's a recreational area when they can just leave it grass. I, I just have that problem, and I think it's, I don't like them saying that's a recreational area, because I think it's just, it sounds like it's something that it's not to me. I mean, maybe just a, I don't know, I don't, um, it's, it just doesn't sit right with me on that, that's all. I, I just think it's not, for a third of an acre, a recreational area, you know, and not, and all they can do is leave it grass.
What if they did?
I don't like it.
What if they did an open field with trails? Would that be better?
Yeah, if we knew what was going there, if it was, you know, I just, if, if we knew what was going there, I, I would like it better.
So, I will say, one of the kind of, uh, highlighted pieces in my presentation, um... So, we, we need to keep in mind that at right, at this phase right now, the preliminary plat has to show proposed recreation space if, if it's gonna be used. The town, at final plat, will review if it meets the standard of the subdivision ordinance, be considered recreation land based on the criteria set within the subdivision ordinance. So, so...
Right, but, but it still doesn't, that, they still don't have to say what's gonna be there, unless, if they, they have, if it's gonna be grassy area, they just have to say it's gonna be grassy area. Is that right, at that time?
Correct. If it meets the subdivision ordinance, then, then yes, we would have to accept it. Any other questions?
I would like, is Mr. Moore gonna speak?
Yes. Get his, uh, presentation pulled up.
Good evening. It's good to see you guys. Uh, Mr. Chairman, board members, thank you for the opportunity to speak to the recommend Scott Moore. I did work for Bryant Properties, but now with the Foley Group. Bryant Properties was an entity out of Chapelville, uh, called Foley Group, we're the same partners. So, uh, just, just a point of reference and reference as well. Also, before I get busy, could you just give me about three or four minutes of the roll through the public slides? I'm hoping to answer some of your questions. I'm gonna talk about how the HUD relates to preliminary plat, how we've arrived at some of these areas, and I would love to answer the questions, the open space, architectural standards, and we can get into all of that. So, before I begin, I do wanna thank Steven and all of the staff. We have been working really on a year of a project of this size and this scope that has so many environmental items that happen, a lot of work that has to be put in, a lot of this. At this stage, I won't be able to get into the detail of exactly what one open space would be versus another, but we're gaining good ideas moving in the environmental world and some of the things. So, let me run through this real quickly, and then hopefully it answers some of your questions, and if not, we have, we have all night. So, uh, speaking of which, let's, um, since January and our HUD approval of last year, we have provided basically the preliminary survey, do that for two hundred forty-five acres, it takes several, several months to get through all of that. We had the boundary survey done, we flagged the environment in the sensitive areas, which a lot of the sites are wetlands. Uh, we've been working really on the town engineer, uh, really trying to understand how the entire site is going to soar, not only with regards to this phase which we're going for tonight, but also to the future phase as well. And then we've been refining, and I'll talk a little bit about that, with the HUD versus the preliminary plat. So, as Steven has pointed out, um, really just tonight, we're going for the, uh, the two sections, one is track A and track B. Those are the areas that are outlined in blue, so that you know we're coming up with this subsequent phase, which will be the remaining, all the remaining part of the development, which will come for you guys in about sixty to ninety days. We are in complete review of all that. It's got its own set of open spaces and everything else, but for the merits of tonight, we'll talk about just kind of the individual tracks, uh, as we move forward. Um, so, really just wanna start off with talking about the western part here. We'll start with Church Street Extension. And I wanted to, it's important as we go through this process, how is, how is what you guys doing, how are you fulfilling your promises to us when you bring us a HUD drawing? How is it that when you bring a plat, what are you doing to actually meet, you know, what the HUD is? And what we have here at Church Street and what Steven has kind of presented, I just wanna carve out two areas and we'll talk about some of the open spaces. But if you look at the area over to the right, that's the section of the a HUD approve, of the HUD approval. If you look right there at the entrance. Okay. Yeah. Okay. So, some of the things that we wanna talk about when we start evaluating, we get this land information together, is we like to focus on the open spaces to start, but we knew in these phases, we're really kind of pinned in with how we make the connections to the older neighborhoods as well, and then how it will eventually go down and connect here. So, if you look here, we had proposed actually having lots on Church Street Extension that really ran all the way up to the, basically the main road. And when we sit down, we start evaluating these sites, we look at this entire section, we've actually carved this off just to be open space, and there's sections of trees out here that are natural. That's something that we, in addition to the HUD, we're looking at this and saying, "It's a good idea that we go ahead and leave this as open space, that when people come in, it's a completely different feel instead of just coming in immediately and seeing homes in the back of the Church Street. You have areas that you drive into, you have a good feel of an entrance into a community." So, all of that is preserved as open space where it wasn't necessarily approved initially. And then to, to, I think one of the other points of down here, even though this is the gas line easement that comes here, there's some area that's above it that we will be able to make improvements on. We don't know exactly what it's going to be now, but I can tell you, we call this pocket parks really because it has this surrounded by a street on all three sides, so it gives this presence of actually having some sort of improvement. This is probably because of limitations of what Piedmont Natural Gas, it will probably be a grass, it will be a playfield that is maintained regularly by the HOA. Likely will be sodded, so it'll be something different than just grass that's grown that runs along the, the gas line easement. So, and I think you saw previously in one of the areas, that a lot of that gas line easement, it doesn't even have grass. So, we will have to come in, make this look like it's going to be a park, make it function, where people are gonna wanna walk here, but they live on both sides, you know, whether it's single family or whether it's the, you know, the, the single family attached or detached. We want this to be a destination where people are gonna wanna come to. So, this is something that we, this is something that we really wanna focus on. So, outside of looking at it from a HUD, the street network is exactly the same. We still have single family lots that run the same courses we hear, and we also have the single family attached, we're getting to the question earlier. We did carve out and have additional parking in addition to the spaces that are with and on the, uh, the driveways as well. So, it's important to us, we're, we're working with staff, they don't wanna see anybody park on the street, I understand, 'cause it's pretty tight through there, but we will have to do some modified plantings as well, as, as it was pointed out, we can't put a street tree every fifty feet. We'll be able to pocket some, pocket some landscape in between the buildings so that it, it gives you that, that good. So, that covers this section. I'm gonna jump over to, um, to Lori Ellis, and very, very similar design than what you guys saw with the, with the HUD, uh, drawing. Not a whole lot of changes except for two, or probably three. One, there's a huge stand of pine trees that are here that are very mature. That is something we are going to keep. We're also going to, instead of taking the buildings again and pushing them up onto the front of the road, we're pushing all the, all the homes back. We're gonna end up building a berm in here and try to create some separation that'll be planted. So, again, you have that, that nice feel of driving into the community, you don't immediately get on to, get on to the lots. The other item that we've worked with, uh, with Steven as well, is we had no connectivity, even though we have multiple connections throughout the entire subdivision, there's no connectivity, and we opted to actually make another connection, uh, to this, to the property up to the north. So, the only change from the HUD drawing is instead of having open space here on the cul-de-sac, we shifted it down here to an area that was flat, and also in conjunction with the New River Basin, so that we have more of that larger feel, open space area, something that, again, will be a destination. We talked a lot about that in the HUD process, and we want people to be, we want this community to be self-sustaining, we want it to have open space that people wanna draw themselves to, not have to leave the community in order to get recreation. So, as you'll see in the remainder site that we'll come in, we'll have a swim club facility as well. And I completely understand where you guys are coming from, because when we did scouting through all of this, we've heard through a lot of these communities, there is a huge lack of open space in many residential communities here in Winnipeg. And that's something that we wanted to bring a change to the communities that we built in other areas throughout the state, Charlotte, also the Triangle. This is something that we really wanna hang our hat on and make it so that people can go and have usable spaces that they can walk to, not drive to, and that it's all internal and it's self-serving to them. So, that's something that we really pride ourselves on and doing, and that's something that we wanna come across here. But I did wanna just show you the difference between the two, and how it is that we're meeting the vision of what we've laid out before you. And when we, we get back in front of you in about ninety days, we'll see all the other items and all the other open spaces that come through. So, to your point, it is kind of incomplete at this juncture, um, because it, it has an end point, but we'll come in and we'll have the, the finishing. So, um, in summary, as, as Steven had pointed out, we're, this evening, we're just looking at the, just looking at those two phases right now, and then we'll come back before you here in about three months, once we've got the design ready and the staff, go through all the technical aspects of the, of the preliminary plat. So, questions? Um, let me, there was a couple of things that were asked. Uh, we put our architectural standards, so, we actually, in addition to what Steven was talking about, having these, having these standards listed, I'm actually been the one that has approved every single house and every lot that's been built on all of our subdivisions. So, we're looking to not have duplicates, we're looking to have those architectural features that we put into the HUD, and we're looking to have variety as well, 'cause we don't wanna see the same cookie cutter stuff that comes, which you see in a lot of different places. So, there is another level of architecture, it's not done by staff, but it's done internally through us that we review, so we, builder has to have multiple plans that they come. We do not have any builders selected yet, so they have to meet our criteria to be able to come in here and be able to build. Um, as far, as far as the town being able to require standards, the actual state statutes don't allow the towns to create architectural standards, um, for whatever reason. I think it's probably due a lot because they would end up driving the price of cost up on the house if they required so many architectural features to be, to be single standards. So, that's something that the state statutes does, actually does not allow, but we are happy when we come through with the HUD to bring these to you guys, and say we're happy to, you know, provide this as a part of our, as a part of our community. Um, so, active versus passive open space, um, a lot of the areas that we do have in wetlands, that is considered passive, but the other areas that we have highlighted here before you, we want to make them active, we want to make something and put something here that's going to draw people. So, that's part of, part of what we hear, and that's part, part of what we're doing to try to make our subdivision separate from everybody else. We're marketing this different than everybody else, 'cause we're building a lot of open spaces into the design itself, not something that comes in as an afterthought. So, that's very, very important. So, now I'll go with questions.
Um, just another question pertaining to kind of the trees and how you're gonna be putting those in. Are you familiar with structural soils, and will you be using them if you are familiar with structural soils, such as like silver cells?
Are you talking about for trees?
Uh, yeah.
I, I have, I'm not familiar with that. Definitely not soils analysts could tell you anything about that. We would, we would require the, the local nursery to get the guidelines of what it takes to be able to plant the trees themselves and, and work within the spaces.
Yeah. Mr. Moore, I know we're dealing with the preliminary plat, and some of these questions are outside of that, and I appreciate your patience.
Absolutely.
Um, I have three questions. There are, basically, this attached housing is my biggest concern. Um, there's something happened in a development that we have recently in our area that, that leads us to be concerned of what it looks like, and you've already answered that. However, some of it is being leased and rented. I wanna know what the, the thought process is on this attached housing. Who controls this until it's sold, and after it's sold, I understand it can be rented, I, I understand that. But, until it's rented, is there any, will you be leasing or renting it as a, as a developer?
I don't think we've contemplated anything being a for rent aspect, to that, to that answer. We, we're not, we have not come in here to create a for rent lot. I can't speak to the future of what happens, but it's not something that is in our plans, not, it's not something that's contemplated in the HUD, it's not even something that we've been, either been entertaining, so...
And again, this is a, just a design question. The noose buffer, could you describe to me or to us what that would look like? Is it just, it's basically a swale?
Yeah, these, these are particularly swales. I think there are some environmental impacts that we cannot do in these areas, so a lot of them will be left natural. Um, and their, the site is so vast, we have, I mean, it runs, oh goodness, I don't think we have it labeled or anything. I know we have the gas line, yeah, we, yes we do. It runs up, over, down, through, back splits, goes down, cuts down here as well. So, it's not just a one size fits all, it runs through woods, it, it has areas that are, you know, grass. So, the, the point of the New River Basin is to actually, since it receives the rainwater, and these have been receiving rainwater, you know, since some of these areas were farmed, it's for preservation. We have to be able to build off of it, not put lots in it. So, we, we're going to preserve the areas that run in and around it. If they're wooded, obviously we'll keep that. Some of them cut through wetlands, so there's just, it looks different across the board throughout the entire part of the site. But, the main goal is the preservation of those areas, and not getting into it. I don't really think we're even allowed to do any gray here, or, or, or anything.
This is an off-the-wall question, too. When you get into these wetlands, at some point, who is the wetlands gonna belong to and how is it taxed? I mean, where does it go from here?
Sure. The entire site, all of the open space is owned by the homeowners association. All of it is, we improve it as the developer, and when we need it over to the association, we make great budgets. we create budgets that ends up maintaining these items as well. The wetlands, more or less, are, they are left preserved. We, when we get into the construction drawing aspect, we will, we'll route water into them, so we have to take and redesign all of our stormwater to go to basins on the site that we will work around. But the point of the wetlands is, we're not gonna be allowed to touch them and work with them anyways. The unique aspect of it, and what I love, is that lots get to back up to it, so it's preservation, and owners love to back up to areas that are not gonna be able to use. That's something, while a lot of people look at this as a constraint, we look at it as, this is actually very attractive to a lot of people who wanna back up to this. And not back up, there are lots that back up to each other, but as you can see, there is a huge area of lots that back up to, to preserve this place. And I think that is one of the selling points of itself for a lot of homeowners.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Are there any other questions? No. Supposed to eat before you come, Peg. If there's no other questions, well, it's a pleasure to the board. We're here to consider the preliminary plat. Our recommendation, Town Board, is...
That was just for rezoning, thank you though, Peggy.
I second. We have to, we have to accept the preliminary plat, I would think. Our recommendation is to accept it. Do we have a motion by Peg? Second, okay. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I call the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing, thank you. Hey, Mr. Stephen? Report from staff.
Yeah, I'm gonna be really quick. Things are starting to really kind of ramp up on the plans side, so I don't think we're gonna see a lot of lots hit the ground probably this year, but we're getting a lot ready for upcoming. We just received a preliminary plat for Farmstead. If you guys remember, that's the one over there beside Pitt Community College, it's four different parcels.
On the other side?
That's correct.
That nobody could remember last time I brought it up?
Yeah. So we finally got that in, that'll, we're gonna be looking at that from a TRC staff level view this upcoming month. Well, Trace, you guys just approved the R-10 rezoning off of Red Branch Road. The preliminary plat for that's already in actually, too. Pitt Community College is doing a very nice welding building, I think I've told you guys about that in the past. It's gonna be a facility that teaches all different types of welding, even robotics welding. It's gonna be a state-of-the-art facility that's very much needed in eastern North Carolina with all of the industry desires and needs for welders, so. There's a, there's a lot going on, once, once, you know, the New Year's kind of kicks around and starts to look like it's warming up a little bit, that's when everything kind of hits the, hits the office, and we're really seeing it right now, so. If anybody has any questions in the future, certainly let me know.
Couple quick questions.
Yeah.
When do you think Lowe's Foods is set to open?
I don't know one hundred percent. I mean, they're getting close, and they're already starting to hold trainings and hirings and things like that for the Lowe's, uh, accident staff. But not too, too far away, but they haven't, they haven't scheduled the final inspection. No, we haven't received anything on that. I don't know of any projects in the plans either.
You're talking about Main Street?
There's a, that whole area is a, has beautiful potential. I'll say that. I really am. I would love to see downtown kind of.
And what about the property on Chapman Street, at City Bowl? Any plans for that yet?
I don't know of anything that they've, I don't know if they've, I think they're gonna be during vision setting meetings pretty soon, kind of diving a little bit more into that, but I, I haven't, my department, I'll say, hasn't been involved with anything regarding that piece of land. Yes, sir. I believe that's correct. I haven't heard anything new about that. I kinda honestly thought we were gonna see another rezoning proposal by now, but I haven't, haven't heard about that yet, or if they're kind of in the background working on it, or if they're just kind of sitting on it for a little bit, I'm not sure. No, there's gonna be mostly R-6, the rest of it are gonna be townhomes, so they're gonna be kind of like zero lot lines, you know, common walls connected, however you can own your own, if that kind of, but there is gonna be a division line, so you're gonna, the property is gonna be tied with the building itself. It's not gonna be like a condo where the interior walls are feeling that issue, or actually the ground underneath. Any other questions?
Hearing none? I hear a motion adjourned.
Make a motion.
A motion adjourned? I hear multiple motions? Any seconds? All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Oh, man.